I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Our next recommended action is that the board enter closed session. The recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matter pertaining to an individual student, deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. All right, at this time, I would just like to take a moment, and I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the senseless and horrible school shooting that occurred in Texas this week, taking the lives of many young students and two teachers. It came during a week in which we are observing graduations and other pivotal high school events that many of these families now will never get to fully experience. Our thoughts are with all those affected by this tragedy. I also believe that in a broader sense, we're all affected. As a consular, I have seen how events like this can impact each of us deeply. I would encourage all of you to talk about this with your families or find someone to talk with if needed. Our schools have tremendous support resources for those needing help. I would now ask for a moment of silence to honor the lives that were lost far too young. Thank you. Also, there are no words that can undo what has occurred in the schools across the country. So we must instead renew our resolve and our commitment to do all we can in our schools going forward. We have a collaborative commitment to maintaining a safe, secure, and effective learning environment for our students and staff. We are focused together on that work. That priority will never change. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Josh Schumacher for more information regarding safety and security in our buildings now and moving forward. Mr. Schumacher?
As Ms. Klimkowitz shared, the tragedy that occurred at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas is heartbreaking. There are no words to sufficiently express our sorrow for the parents, for the school staff, and for the community of that district. We do want to reaffirm our focus on school safety and security for our community. The safety and security of our District 211 students and staff is of utmost priority. We have thoroughly researched and implemented our current procedures and protocols and continue to explore new technologies, practices, and resources in order to keep our schools safe. Federal and state law enforcement extensively research school safety and how to avert school violence. The Secret Service in particular has released multiple reports in which they have identified key findings and implications for schools. These key findings support many of our current practices and procedures which we have put in place in District 211. Without providing specific details that would undermine our current security procedures, I want to describe a few of our most important practices that have shown to be successful in reducing violence and improving safety. The first is the ability for students and school community members to report concerns, either anonymously or through self-identification. District 211 currently has multiple available ways to report concerns directly to school administration, including our Safety Concern Reporting Mechanism, which is available on our websites and is installed on every school-issued iPad. We also have a safety hotline, which is a school phone number and message system monitored by school administration. Finally, we have recently partnered with Safe2Help, which is a reporting mechanism established by the state of Illinois. In short, there are multiple ways to report a concern which are actively monitored by our school staff. The second practice is collaborating with local law enforcement. Our school resource officers play a key role in school safety. We are fortunate to have decades-long partnerships with our local law enforcement professionals. The presence of school resource officers in our schools significantly reduces response time in emergency situations and ensures the most abrupt and timely response to threats of safety. Our school resource officers build and maintain excellent relationships with our students and are able to provide additional levels of support right here in our schools. In addition to their presence, we have made steps to improve the physical security of our buildings, including limiting the number of entrances and exits that are used during the school day for students and staff and maintaining a single point of entry for visitors during the school day. This, coupled with locked doors, perimeter door alarms, and buzzer systems allows us to effectively utilize our supervision and security resources. Finally, threat assessment procedures have been the most commonly and strongly emphasized recommendation by security professionals. Early detection and intervention with individuals that demonstrate concerning behavior and need support is essential. Beginning in 2015, District 211 designed and implemented a research-based threat assessment, identification, and assessment tool. Since then, the tool has evolved to stay current with contemporary recommendations and best practices. Whenever a threat assessment is initiated, a school resource officer is consulted and involved. We know that inter-agency communication, awareness, and partnership is essential to ensure awareness of the concerns and subsequent follow-up. The three practices I have described tonight is not an exhaustive list of all the ways that we strive to keep our students safe. We stay committed to continually researching, updating, and modifying both our physical assets as well as our procedures, protocols, and practices related to school safety and security. As many of you know, the board recently approved upgrades to our public address systems which provide vital notification and communication within our building so that we can effectively prevent and respond to safety concerns. We are also actively researching other facility, safety, and technological upgrades to further improve the safety of our schools, including options for our doorways and entryways. For all the things that we currently do and will do in the future, it is imperative that you, our community, continue to collaborate together with us. We need your support and we need your help. The National Threat Assessment Center stated that individuals contemplating violence often exhibit observable behaviors prior to an incident. And when parents and community members report concerns, tragedies can be averted. We have administrators and staff ready to hear your concerns, investigate potential issues, and provide support to students who are struggling. Our local law enforcement partners are ready and willing to collaborate with us. We also ask that you speak with your students about the importance of utilizing our support systems. We have trained counselors, school social workers, and school psychologists that can offer assistance and support in times of conflict, stress, or trauma. We are here to help. Let us honor the lives lost in Texas this week by coming together as a school community and making a commitment together to keep our schools safe.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. As you students have heard, you guys are very important to us, and we will do everything to help protect you, keep you safe, and help you grow academically. And as you're growing academically, we've got something to celebrate tonight, and you deserve that recognition and that celebration. So we will move on to our state award winners, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Winkowski.
Eric Winkowski, the Director of Athletics and Activities, come forward to introduce our very talented mathematician.
Board of Education and Dr. Small, thank you for taking some time to honor some of the state's best mathletes tonight. Also here to support and honor their students are Fremd Principal Mark Langer and Assistant Principal Mandy Hughes. Students, as your sponsor introduces you, please walk forward towards the podium and get your award. Additionally, any guests of the students should stand and be recognized as their students are introduced. So I'm going to introduce Chris Grittoni, who's the Fremd High School Math Team Coach. Chris is a nationally board-certified math and computer science teacher at Fremd High School and is a familiar face here at the Board of Education meetings. He has coached the math team since 2007, has been the head coach since 2012. In the last decade, his math teams have qualified for the state meet, well, I guess it's over the last decade, has qualified for the state meet 11 times. Chris is also a proud District 211 graduate. Chris?
It is my pleasure to introduce the members of the Fremd High School Math Team who earned medals at the ICTM State Mathematics Contest. I'd first like to start by thanking Dr. Small and the Board of Education for their enthusiastic support of our program. The students we are recognizing tonight earned fourth place in state with their superb performance on their team contests. The first team I will be recognizing is the freshman-sophomore eight-person contest. This contest consists of 20 questions in 20 minutes, there are no calculators allowed, and each team can only submit one answer sheet. Because of these challenges, a successful eight-person team requires a superb level of teamwork, communication skills, and mathematical ability. The next team that earned fourth place at state is the Junior Algebra II Written Team. For this contest, a team of six students compete individually on a 50-minute contest, and their scores are combined. While no teamwork is allowed during the contest itself, our junior written team achieved this success by committing themselves to practicing and learning together before the contest. Our students are accompanied tonight by their parents, whose love and support have helped our math team members grow up to be the terrific young people that they are today. Parents, please stand and be recognized. Finally, I'd like to call each team member forward to receive a District 211 medallion recognizing your accomplishment. When you hear your name, please come forward. First, the freshman-sophomore eight-person team, sophomore Joey Jang. Freshman Rishi Khanchi. Freshman Andrew Chian. Freshman Jason Zhou. And last but not least, freshman Eddie Zhou, who is being recognized tonight for earning first place in state for his individual performance on the ICTM Written Contest. And next, the Junior Algebra II Written Team, Albert G. Thomas Lu. Shoro Mazumder. Megan Wong. And Sophia Zhao. Congratulations to all of you, and on behalf of the entire math team, I'd like to thank you for your tireless hard work and dedication. You have truly upheld the Fremd Math Team's tradition of excellence. Thank you.
All right, then that takes, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Small?
No, I was going to go to the Booster Club Presidents. Mr. Kramer, as the board liaison for the Booster Club President, will you please come forward to introduce our Presidents for District 211? Presidents, when your name is called, please come forward to the podium to accept your certificate.
Thank you, Superintendent Small. It's a little awkward being here at the podium instead of at the table. This was my first year as Board of Education liaison to the Boosters Club. I spent several years as a professional fundraiser and asked to be appointed by the board president to this role, as I thought my experience might be helpful. We had an introductory meeting in the fall where two things were immediately obvious to me: one, I had no responsibilities whatsoever; or, second, or in other words, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I know firsthand that successful fundraising requires creativity, detailed planning, and above all, tireless dedication and perseverance. It is a pleasure and distinct honor to assist in recognition of the leaders of the District 211 Boosters Club who define these qualities. There are two individuals who could not make it tonight. First is Tracy Garcia of the Conant High School Boosters Club. Tracy is unable to attend tonight, but I did want to recognize the boosters' achievements. In her first year as president, as the group ran a craft fair, a clothing drive, and a casino night, and gave 12 scholarships to Conant students, two of those were for $1,500, ten for $1,000. Additionally, unable to attend tonight is Lori Philby, also of the Conant High School Band Boosters Club. Lori was unable to attend, but I wanted to recognize the boosters' work following her third year as president. The group held its annual fundraising dinner and hosted dine-out nights. The money raised supported all band students. Specifically, it helped provide food at football and basketball games, clean uniforms, and aided directors in creating new appointments. Again, thank you, Lori. Jennifer Myers. Jennifer Myers is the president of the Fremd High School Viking Boosters Club. This is her first year as president. The group raised significant funds to support Fremd students through events like the Holiday Craft Fair, a virtual auction, and Homecoming Spirit Split the pot raffle. Under Jennifer's leadership, the group awarded 16 $1,000 scholarships to deserving Fremd students. Jennifer, thank you for your work. Darcy Callison and Cynthia Niketta, did I pronounce the last name correctly? Fremd High School Music Association. Darcy and Cynthia have served as co-presidents of Fremd's Music Association since 2020. This year, the group held a bingo night, sold cookie dough, and hosted a benefit concert. The work supported Fremd's band, choir, and orchestra programs with efforts like instrument repair fees, private lesson scholarships, new choir garment bags, and the cost of large instruments, including a marimba and a baritone saxophone. Thank you, Darcy and Cynthia. Kate Johnson, Hoffman Estates High School Loyal Partners. Kate is completing her third year as booster president, and this year worked with the group to award nine $1,000 scholarships to students at Hoffman Estates High School. Under her dynamic leadership, the group held another successful trivia night, sold concessions at school events, and also sold spiritware for proceeds through the school store. Thank you, Kate. Donika Semerano. Semenero, apologies. Hoffman Estates High School Music Parents Association. Donika saw a very successful year with the Music Parents Association, resulted in the awarding of three scholarships to Hoffman Estates High School music students, among other student support. Fundraisers included Agaribaldi's Dine to Donate and the sales of cheesecakes, magnets, and spirit clappers. Dominic, thank you for your hard work. Terriann Jones and Jennifer Lang. Palatine High School Pirate Boosters Club. Terriann is completing her fourth year as Pirate Booster Club co-president, and Jennifer is completing her second. This year, the group raised $40,000 through three main fundraisers, including a craft fair, dinner auction, and several dine and shares. The group provided 17 scholarships for Palatine High School students. Again, thank you, Terriann and Jennifer. Amy Semenello and Sonia Mortel. Schaumburg High School Very Interested Parents. Amy and Sonia both are in their first year as booster co-presidents. This year, the Very Interested Parent Group hosted three significant fundraisers, including a dine-to-donate event and a trivia night, as well as operating the Saxon Store. The money raised funded 15 $1,000 scholarships for Schaumburg residents. Thank you, Amy and Sonia. Rick Barlow, Schaumburg High School Band Boosters Club. The Schaumburg Band Boosters saw record volunteer participation this year under Rick's leadership. The group held three major fundraisers: a craft show bake sale, a holiday craft and raffle, and the Jazz in Joe Coffee House. Among other things, the group hosted a Q&amp;A session for District 54 band parents and created a new water distribution process to keep student musicians hydrated among changing safety protocols. Again, thank you, Rick. On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you to all of the Boosters Club leaders, including those who are not here today. These presidents and volunteers who gave tirelessly of their time and effort have accomplished so much to support District 211 students and the community. Please join me in a well-deserved round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Thank you to all of our guests here this evening, all of our band and parent booster clubs. You guys do a tremendous job. You deserve a thousand thanks, the time that you spend, what you do for the school, and how you help out. So you are truly, truly appreciated. Thank you so much. And thank you to our students, and congratulations on your accomplishments. That's absolutely tremendous with your math recognitions and your placements. Thank you to your parents. Thank you, parents, for encouraging your kids, for supporting them, for being there, and for always helping out. It's truly appreciated. At this time, we're going to take a few minutes break so we can get some pictures of our students and then pictures, I believe, of our boosters. Right, Mr. Schumacher? We're going to take pictures of, okay. So let me have our students up here, and we'll take a short couple-minute break, and then we'll begin our regular session. And our next item of business is public comments. The board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important to know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in the order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Schumacher. All right, I have two individuals who have signed up. The first is Jane Van, followed by Joyce Slavic.
My name is Jane Van, and I am a resident of D211. Two very brief comments. One, I wanted to personally state and remind people within the community after the events that occurred this week down in Texas that our schools, they are responsible for the safety of our students and to provide the safest environment possible. However, our teachers and administrators are not responsible for the problems that are occurring throughout our country today due to the gun ownership in our country. Other thing I wanted to bring up, I saw an article today in the Chicago Tribune, and the headline caught me, and I have a couple questions on it. The headline was "Civil Rights Investigation Opened in Illinois' Largest High School District," following the Tribune ProPublica investigation. And this article went on to state that District 211, being that largest school district, the students are cited for municipal ordinance violations relating to school-based conduct. Also, it stated that the district does not keep records of when students get cited by the police. My first question on this is, are parents told that students can receive a municipality ticket while they are in school? I personally had three children go through the district. I was not aware that the law enforcement officers that are in the schools can write a ticket to a student for whatever the behavior might be. One young lady was quoted in this article as stating she was in an altercation, raised her hand toward a student but did not impose any type of physical contact, and was given a citation or a ticket for disorderly conduct valued at $200 for a 17-year-old child. I think many people aren't aware of this and should be, and I question, should a child be responsible for an adult municipality ticket for behavior within a school that I personally think the school should be addressing these problems before our municipal police department has to get involved? Thank you.
Thank you. If you would like a response, if you can give your contact information to Mr. Schumacher, we'll see what we can do. Thank you. Ms. Slavic?
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavic. I am a parent in the district. It's just another day in America. Nineteen more children dead, two more teachers, more in the hospital, and classmates and families traumatized. Gun violence is now the single-largest killer of American children. Because Republicans insist on protecting freedoms of an increasing minority of our population, gun owners, we seem to be accepting that we will refuse to protect our children. We allow companion industry to the gun manufacturers to take advantage with security systems and bulletproof backpacks rather than actually stopping the carnage. This is the 27th school shooting this year. There have been 119 school shootings since 2018. These are not unpredictable, they are not inevitable, they are man-made. We need federal legislation on universal background checks, safe gun storage. Ethan's Law is making its way through Congress, and bans on assault weapons. People can contact their congresspeople and senators about that. But while we wait for Republicans to stand up and care about kids more than power, there are things that school districts can do to stop carnage before it starts, and I appreciate Mr. Schumacher sharing some of that information. Everytown Research and Policy has done much research on this topic. The best way to protect American schools from mass shootings and gun violence is to adopt evidence-based intervention plans, like the one proposed by Everytown, the American Federation of Teachers, and the National Education Association. Using what we know about school gun violence, those organizations have put together a plan that focuses on intervening before violence occurs. that focuses on intervening before violence occurs, not after. Arming teachers specifically would be one of the bad things to do, as that increases risks for gun violence in schools. There are things that school districts can do, even though legislation is not within their power. These expert-endorsed actions that schools can take to intervene and address warning signs of violence to keep school shooters out of schools. Threat assessment programs is the top thing. Identify and manage potential threats of violence. These programs allow schools to understand and intervene when a student is at risk to themselves or others. This would protect students from suicide as well as homicide, and honestly, we are not doing a good enough job in this district. I applaud that we are trying, but I'm telling you, we need to do better. Every staff member needs to be trained in threat assessments. Implementing basic security upgrades, I'm glad to hear there's some consideration there. Basic security measures that prevent unauthorized access to school buildings, grounds, and classrooms, including access control measures and interior door locks, can intervene to prevent access to a school and give law enforcement time to respond. And establishing safe and equitable schools. Schools should review school discipline practices, establish community schools, ensure threat assessment programs are not having a disproportionate impact on communities of color, and promote effective partnerships between students and adults in order to keep schools safe. From the recent article in ProPublica that was just mentioned, we know that our district appears to not have done a good job on this by bringing in police to ticken minors for misbehaviors that should be handled by the school, and appearing to target minority students in particular. And another thing that the district can and should do is provide information on free gun locks. We have those at the police station and the importance of locking up guns in homes with minors. This is something that is not political and really we need to publicize. Those gun locks are available at the police station. Since there may be, you know, families of color who may not be comfortable going there, we should look at maybe having some even in the school district's office. Thoughts and prayers will not save a single life. Policy and legislation will. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say, I know that the district will be responding to some of the comments or the questions in regards to truancy and so on, and I would just ask that people keep an open mind because it's quite possible that some questions have not been asked and some answers might shed a little bit more light on the whole situation of truancy and tickets and things of that nature. So I think there's a lot more to it than what has currently been published. I've not read this one right now, but I think there's some more information. So, all right. That takes us to our consent agenda items. I've got two recommended actions. The first is that the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting for May 12, 2022 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The second recommended action is that the minutes of the regular meeting of May 12, 2022 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Stain.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right. That takes us to special reports and communication. We have information on the Freedom of Information Act request. It's an information item. The next is unfinished business, and that is our strategic plan update. Dr. Small, would you like to make any comments in regards to it, please?
In preparation of the final plan being presented in June, a draft of strategies has been added to the documents for your review tonight, as well as a few draft pages of what the layout of the plan itself may look like. The document with priorities, goals, indicators, and strategies is the same document you have seen a few times now, but it has five-year targets that are added. The targets are a combination of processes and numeric targets that rise to the level of being a target. We welcome any feedback on this tonight before the plan is presented formally to the board in June.
Okay, anyone have any questions or comments?
The only comment I have is under wellness. The indicator under there is safety. How is that measured as far as a metric would go?
Are you talking Goal 5? Wellness and the sense of belonging, trust, and safety?
Yes, that's correct.
So if you look at 5.4, annually improved positive responses on the Five Essential Survey, the Five Essential Survey that our students, parents, and staff take have questions that are directly related to safety, and so we can actually get a metric on their responses per year and look at the trend year over year.
So we can get that, but how do we achieve that goal of keeping our students safe? If we get the survey data back that shows that it's low, what's our...
Sure, so the question's...
What's our current baseline metric that we're comparing to?
In the target for 23, 22, 23, that's when the current baseline metric is going to be set. So that's in the 5.4 target, 22, 23. It says analyze current questions and response to establish the baseline. So that's when the baseline will be set, and the questions are related to particular components of safety. So for example, there's a question, and this isn't the exact question, so don't quote me, I don't have it in front of me, but it'll say, "I feel safe in my classroom." The next question will say, "I feel safe in the hallways." The next question says, "I feel safe in the cafeteria gymnasium." And so we can actually disaggregate safety as an overall sense, but also then pertaining to the direct questions that are asked.
So within this, again, I'm picking on safety, but I just, there's a reason. Will we be assessing whether or not our students feel safe among their peers or just in a general environment of a classroom or a building?
Yeah, I can get to the specific questions. I can pull those that have been asked in the past. They will likely be similar or exact in the future and provide those to you and the rest of the board so you can get a sense of what they say.
Okay. And then to modify that response, or we would be implementing certain, I guess, my concern is that if we have a response from our students that they don't feel safe, we're going to modify their environment until they do? Is it going to be trial and error, or is there some way to do this as sort of a evidence-based approach?
So the next target within that same box is to, once we analyze the questions and the baseline rate, we're going to pull student focus groups together. And so using the student wellness teams that already exist, that we've engaged in throughout this school year at each school, and then in our student wellness forum. So we'll engage those student wellness teams in a focus group-type setting to provide some more specific information to us. Again, using the same question for an example, if we're looking at a question where the safety in hallways is a low amount of positive responses on that survey, we would directly address that in the focus group to get the student mindset of what is it about the hallway or what does that mean to you, so that we could then act on what the students are directly telling us.
And if the wellness team responds differently than the survey data, what happens? So if the focus group doesn't agree with the larger populace data, how do you approach that?
So I think that would be within the focus group itself. We would, you know, the way we would craft that focus group is to say, this is all hypothetical, of course, right?
Right.
So craft the focus group to say, "The lowest response in this school was on hallways. Can you tell us about how you feel about hallways? And if you aren't worried, why would the student body report that as the lowest? What would you think?" And if we couldn't get a good response on that, we would go to other groups.
Okay. Thank you. Follow-on question. Is a survey going to be a binary choice? Am I safe or am I not safe? Or is it going to be a scale of 1 to 10?
1 to 5.
1 to 5, okay.
Okay.
Lauren, can you speak to 9.4 and the safety component there?
So in 9.4, I'm just bringing it up here.
Lauren, can you speak up?
Yes. In 9.4, there are, in year one, there is an action step to evaluate the possible school safety enhancement solutions, and then thereafter, implementing the enhancement solutions that were identified following that research. So that can take shape in a number of different solutions that could be evaluated and implemented, but I think those would go along the line primarily of some of our facility and actual physical safety features within our buildings.
And we can certainly move the timeline of implementation forward depending on what the structure is or if there's any type of structural changes that need to be done that would happen in the summer versus something we could do faster.
Yes, I agree with that. The other item that's right above that particular step is the phased-in implementation of the public address system improvements that Mr. Schumacher addressed earlier as well, and that is another item that we do anticipate beginning next school year.
Other questions, comments?
Okay. I was especially interested in, so I'm looking at excellent staff, so here, 8.1. And the increase focused on, I mean, it's described here in a number of different ways, creating a pathway for District 211 teacher assistance.
Ms. Cavill, can you put the microphone? It's not projecting over the speakers here.
Yes, okay. Is this better?
Better, yeah.
Okay. So I was especially excited to read about 8.1. Okay, so I'm looking at, like, it's a broad-based thing, but, you know, an increased focus on internal recruitment. So we have here examining opportunities to create a pathway for District 211 teacher assistance. And I was also interested in the targets for 2023 and '24. It says identify and recruit rising 11th and 12th grade students to participate in the program. And I was just wondering what sorts of ideas... I mean, this to me sounds like there are already ideas about what that might look like, so...
Sure.
Yeah.
What research says at this point is the best way to increase the diversity of your staff is to identify students who you would want to come back and be teachers in your district. And so we have, we are certified by the state in what's called an education pathway, and so we have the courses within our high school that students could take to earn certifications and then move on to college right within the education pathway. So the goal is to utilize the existing structure that we have to strengthen that with the students that are interested, but also to start having conversations with more students who would potentially explore that as a career pathway, and then supporting them throughout their high school time and potentially their college time.
Okay. And so we have an increased capacity to potentially have more students in that pathway if the recruitment is successful, which we hope it would be.
Definitely.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment slash question. Because of all the heightened security we're going to start implementing and focus on in the schools, for any reason, if we need to pivot and adjust the security or maybe the tools or resources, is money already allocated in our budgets for that, or would we need to have a special board meeting to approve any of the enhancements of the buildings?
Well, each year, the board will review the budget, and certainly, the major capital items that are included in the operations and maintenance fund are always identified for the board so that you have an opportunity to review those. But we do have continued funds that are allocated in our projections, which would be, we use that as a formulation of what we anticipate our budget to be relative to those major capital line items moving forward. So we have that built out over the next five years.
Thank you.
I have one more, and this is just a request. I've asked for this previously, so I just want to reiterate that I would like a copy of the Healthy Fitness Zone metrics that is measured on FitnessGram. This has been mentioned a couple of times. I just want to see what that looks like. I mean, the last time I saw a PE assessment, it was the Presidential Fitness Test, you know? And so I would like to see what this looks like as a comparison.
Sure. I'm happy to provide that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. And this will come back to us. All right. The next item is our proposed policy revision, and the recommended action is that the board policy file, AD District Mission Statement, be adopted as proposed and added as an active board policy on board docs. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distributions. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski? Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next recommended action is on our 211 value statements. The recommended action is that the board policy file, AF High School District 211 Value Statements, be adopted as proposed and added as an active board policy on board docs. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right. That takes us to gymnasium scoreboards under new business, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of five scoreboards from Varsity Scoreboard at a total cost of $247,795. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Dr. Small, would you like to add anything?
These boards are at the end of their expected life and we are repairing them more often than is efficient, which is why they are presented to you tonight.
Okay. Does anyone have questions? Mr. Kramer?
Can you put the superintendent's mic closer to the speaker? It's not broadcasting here.
Dr. Small, can you say something just so we can see how loud you sound?
Yes. These boards are at the end of their expected life and we are repairing them more often than is efficient, which is why they are presented to you tonight.
Okay. And Dr. Small...
Is that better?
That was better. And Dr. Small does have the summary in here, basically, of that they've kind of lived their life expectancy and the replacement of parts has become expensive. Mr. Bradley?
Yeah, I've been involved in other schools in our area, and I know one school in particular had donations made for them to purchase that scoreboard, and one of them was by a company I worked for at the time, and so they would acknowledge us on an annual basis just for donations. Have we thought about looking for donations for any of the scoreboards or sponsorship? Sponsorships, donations?
Dr. Small, can you respond to that?
I didn't hear it fully. It's about sponsorship?
About sponsorship and donations.
Correct. So we currently do not take external sponsorship in terms of a practice in District 211. That would be something that, if the board wants to move forward on that, would be a board discussion.
Okay. Any other questions in regards to this?
Did we get quotes from any other companies?
The proposal that's in front of you is from a purchasing cooperative where they have vetted proposals, and this is their pricing solicited for this particular option that we have presented.
And can you speak to, the scoreboards come with a camera kit?
There are camera kits and other accessories that are used, and I can let Mr. Schumacher talk a little bit about some of the functions that those would provide for our students.
Sure. Sure. So, obviously, a scoreboard in a gymnasium is typically for an athletic competition. So, this would replace our current scoreboards and be used for athletic competitions. It does come with other features, though. So, for some of our major competitions, and I'll use IHSA State Gymnastics as an example, we do have a video system that we roll in and rent and provide for that. And so, a video in that case could be used in this sense. Outside of athletics, this could also enhance our activities. For instance, a concert that's being held in a gymnasium, potentially, many of you have been to our incoming parent nights or our community education nights, which could, the presentations and different parts of that could be enhanced. And then finally, I would say, from the curricular end, our wellness classes are in our gymnasium all throughout the day. And so, this could be used for curricular measures to enhance what's going on in our wellness courses.
And also, just one more comment. I have seen the scoreboard with the camera feature being used during volleyball games just to review plays.
Any other questions?
A couple of comments. I'm getting, I'm somewhat concerned about the cash flow aspect of what we did last board meeting, where we approved, I think it was, you know, the PA system, the ADA upgrade to the auditorium and air conditioning. For what was the total amount?
For all three projects combined, it was 18 million.
18 million? We all know that the property tax bills are going to be, are going to come out late. And that we're probably going to be forced with a decision of either floating bonds or going deeply into reserves. So, when will this money actually be spent? And how will we make up for it?
This is an item that would be spent by end of fiscal year. So, we are looking at spending this within the next several weeks. The tax shortage that you're, or delay that you're referencing would take place toward the end of the calendar year. And yes, we do anticipate that that will have an impact on the district, and that we would utilize reserves. There is no projection at this point that we would be in a situation of looking at bonds or tax anticipation warrants.
So, it's the administration's position that we have enough reserves not to have to float bonds, and that that's not going to impact our safety level?
We have reviewed our cash projections. We are, you know, this would push out our receipts into December and January, which is a couple-month delay beyond our normal timetable. So, no, there is not an anticipation, as we've looked at our cash balances, there is not an anticipation that we would be in a position of needing bonds or otherwise.
Thank you.
Because I know when we've looked at our budgets, you know, comments have been made that we do exceed our fund budget balance. And I think this board and prior boards, the most recent prior board, were very adamant about not having to do the working cash bonds, making certain we have the funds that we need to support our schools. So, that's a good discussion, and I'm glad that that was brought up. Okay, any other question?
I want to, from my own understanding, at the last board meeting, we approved soliciting bids.
Yes.
So, when those bids come back, we will then take a vote on whether we're not going, whether or not we're going to spend that money. Right, is that correct? On those particular projects?
Yes. And that 18 million dollars is not anticipated to be spent, if any. Very little is anticipated to be spent before January of '23.
And I just want to make sure I understood what we vote, what we actually voted on, and then what we'll have the chance to vote on in the future.
That is correct.
It wasn't the 18 million dollars. It was the preliminary costs, the upfront costs, that you have to say that we voted yes.
Yes. The motion was to approve further design and future bids to be developed for the three projects.
And can you clarify, Ms. Hummel, it would be over a period of, what, four years?
Right now, we've laid it out over four years. Certainly, we have the ability to modify that schedule, but that's what we are looking at as we further the development of the bid specifications, or the design specifications. We will have more information on what that looks like. Certainly, you know, if we continue to have supply chain shortages and things like that, that schedule may change slightly. But right now, we are looking at it over four years.
It's not specific to the scoreboards, but when do you expect to have the bids and the preliminary information back to us, RFPs and?
Well, the soonest that we would have information would be for the public address system for Conant High School that we are looking at for the school year. And that would be in the coming months. Everything else, we are looking at for summer. I have to get my years right. There would be, the soonest any other bid would be, would be fall, but more than likely, we would be a year out, just because, again, of the timing and the development. So, we are looking at cooling for at least one, if not two, schools for summer 2023. Those bids, we anticipate having out in, I would say, by September, is what we're targeting.
So, a little more than a year from now is when we're going to start getting a good picture of where the money, where the money may go?
Yeah. The first, the largest bid that will come to you first would be the cooling. And again, that one, I anticipate that to go out in September. It would probably come to the board for approval in October. So, that would be the first set of money. I don't anticipate the auditoriums to come to the board until probably a year from then.
And that's September and October of this year?
Of this year, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hummel. All right, any other questions? Okay, if there's no other questions, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right. The next item that we have, well, it's not on the laptop here. Any potential topics for future discussion? Okay. All right. Then we will move on to our committee reports. I do not have an NSSEO committee report. And that'll take us to EdRed.
The next EdRed meeting is on June 3rd.
All right. Thank you. Community and Family Services Report. Mr. Dombrowski or Mr. McGowan?
Yes, we had, sorry. There's an alarm on my phone to water my plants at home. All right, I'll do it when I get home. The Community and Family Services, we met on the South Group. We discussed a lot of upcoming events. There was a focus around housing. There was a passionate plea from Ms. Musson's office to reach out to our elected local officials for more affordable housing. They say that when they go, that there's no demand for it when they're pressing with village presidents and elected officials at that level. There was discussion about the Juneteenth event being sponsored by the township and the library. There was discussion about the Pride event that'll be held at Trickster Gallery, sponsored by Kenneth Young Center, and other available services and coordination. So, those were a lot of the discussion at that meeting.
And maybe just for clarification, because I know there was a question that came out about District 211 being a sponsor for Juneteenth, and they're not.
Yeah, it was on the flyer, I think.
Okay, yes. And then some of our students are participating in it, which is awesome.
Excuse me. Mr. Dombrowski, you talked about affordable housing. Is there any more information about that and what they're looking for?
No, they're just, there's constant discussion of finding affordable housing in our area and our community, and issues with several people paying large amounts of rent to sleep, you know, in a, in a setting that isn't necessarily equitable with what they're paying. So, that was, that was all that was really conveyed. It wasn't specific. It was more of an incentive to reach out to our local municipalities to encourage more zoning and development in that.
Well, I will also reach out to the local banks. There's a large sum of money around the Community Reinvestment Act, and banks are giving up to $20,000 based on various income levels and areas for down payments for individuals that are looking for affordable housing. So, they definitely should reach out to local banks as well and talk to them about the CRA.
For mortgages?
For mortgages, for the ones that are renting that aren't in situations that are suitable for themselves and possibly want to look at an alternative and become a homeowner. Because there are a lot of discounts and money that's given to help and assist.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. I know through our agency, we're working with a lot of clients, that their rents have suddenly gone up, you know, $200 a month, maybe $300 a month, which, you know, is totally outrageous and very difficult for some of the households to be able to afford that high of an increase. So, thank you. All right. Then it's the Strategic Planning Steering Committee. We had our final meeting, and a good number of people were there. They participated in kind of a final summary of what was, what has transpired, what was done. They looked at the goals. They had a little project of taking a look at a couple of them and offering some suggestions and maybe some things that they're asking administration to take a look at as we set priorities and our goals. So, that was really good. Just for some number information, there were 34 members that were part of our steering committee. They had 30 focus groups when they did the focus groups, and it was led by our steering committee members. And they had 1,500-plus stakeholders that were engaged through the different surveys and so on. So, I think we had a really good representation of participation there. So, all right. The next item is our calendar of events. We've got that. Memorial Day weekend, the summer school begins on June 6th, and then our next board meeting is going to be June 16th. That takes us, then, to our next several items here. And the recommended action is retirement requests. The recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Barbara Dahl, effective December 2022, consistent with the Master Contract of District 211 United Support Staff. Michelle Egerton, effective May 2026, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Nancy Casos, effective June 2024, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. And Julie Nowak, effective June 2026, consistent with the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, is that the same Julie Nowak that's our principal over at Conant? I don't know if we can, I'm not so sure I can vote on that.
I don't know. We'll have to see.
She does a really good job.
I think we need to put some emotion into those votes for that.
All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next recommended action is that, effective July 1st, 2022, Ricky Sparks be appointed as Director of Facilities and Purchasing at Township High School District 211 at a gross salary of $148,000. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next item, the recommended action, is that the Board of Education approve a total salary allocation for technology, transportation, clerical exempt, and management employees at an overall increase of 3.7% over the 2021-2022 school year, effective July 1st, 2022, for the 2022-2023 school year as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. And the last recommended action is that the Board of Education shall provide an alternative school education program for student number 310019, for up to two calendar years for violating board policy JFC, so long as student number 310019 meets the attendance, behavioral, and academic requirements of the alternative school education program. The Board of Education shall hold its disciplined determination in abeyance. If student number 310019 does not accept the alternative school program or meet the attendance, behavioral, and academic requirements of the offered alternative school program, then the Board of Education shall expel student number 310019 from Township High School District 211 for two years, until May 26, 2024. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to notify the parties of the written decision as presented via certified mail and email. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.[1785.41]